Okay, looks like we're counting down. Ooh, you know what I should do is play this intro. Yeah, let's do this. Okay, coming on back. For some reason, the stream is playing on my computer? Oh yeah, there it is. That's because we're on Twitch! Welcome everybody to Crunchy Crunchy 2, to the show! Je m'appelle Skylar, je suis Skylar. Uh... Mon nom est Skylar. Et... I'm learning French! My name is Skylar, I'm part of a band called Sweet Crude. Uh, we sing in half in English, half in Louisiana French. Uh, Sam, our lead singer, speaks fluently. I make a lot of sounds with my mouth. And pretend like I know what I'm doing. Um... So... We're here to change that. I'm on a 30-day challenge. Uh, today is day 22. I'm feeling good about it. Uh, and I've got a lot to do. This might be a long episode, sorry. Uh, but I've got a lot of work to do, got a lot of catching up to do. Um, to Monsieur Sam Kraft. Uh, he's great, he's just, you know, he's just a rock star. Um, so, we're gonna try to make him proud. Uh... Well, anyway, this isn't for him, this is for me. Um, but, you know, I wanna speak with him in French. And I speak with a bunch of other people in French, so we're gonna do that. Uh, anyway, here's how the show works. You sit back and watch me learn some French. Uh, if you hear me messing up, feel free to laugh. Uh, if you want to help me out, drop some things in the comments and then in the chat some things. Uh, if you, uh, think this is dumb and you're only here for Sweet Crude music, that's cool too, I get it, I hear ya. Um, and, uh, I bid you adieu. Um, hope to see you next time. Uh, there's only a couple more days of this, so hopefully I won't bother you anymore after that. Um, okay, so today, here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna go through some, um, I'm gonna continue on my quest to learn little kid words. We're in a book called 300 Moes. Uh, then, I'm gonna do some Babbel. We're gonna work in the language learning software Babbel. Which was a disaster last time, it'll probably be a disaster again. Um... Uh, and then we're gonna continue on our, uh, story of, uh, The Bird and the Whale. Uh, le oiseau et la baleine. Who, it's a love story. Um... Hey, Zerg cow! That's from Twitch, let's get that up there. First Twitch comment, everyone! Woo! Uh, it's big time now, watch out! Uh, and yes, you'll notice I speak a lot of English on this French learning show. Okay, I'm gonna stop stalling, I'm gonna get into this thing. Um, okay, bye dog, my dog's running around. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna learn some new vocabulary words today. I've put all these into flashcards. Um, and we're gonna go over those flashcards, but I figured it'd be fun to start with a little, um, just look at the pictures, you know? So, um, let's jump over to our book, um, which is Hotkey 3. Oh man, that's pretty far away, can we zoom in on that? Yeah, okay. So, here's the first list, here's a couple things we're gonna get through. Oh, let me get this, oh god, things are happening. Um... We're gonna get this, um... Ah, here we go, gotta get this microphone a little closer. Okay, vocabulary list for today, we're gonna kinda fly through this page. Une saucisse. That's a sausage? Une, une saucisse? Is that how you say that? Une saucisse! Okay. Euh, chariot, un chariot. Like a chariot, like, you know, medieval times, like gladiators. Shopping warrior. Un chariot. Ah, chariots, masculine. Um, and I'm probably butchering the pronunciations, just, that's okay, we, that's fine, we'll get there. Um... Une vache. It's a cow, une vache. Um... Une boîte de céréale. Une boîte de céréale. So a little, uh, little cereal box, that's cool. Uh... Ah, na na na. Ah na na na. Hey, you know what, you know what'd be fun for this, um, this little scene what we're working in right here? Let's get a little picture-in-picture going, is that possible? Can we, can we do that? Cameras, can we get the... Wh- why? No? Not allowed? It's not allowed apparently. Um... How about this one? No, I don't wanna do that. Picture-in-picture, that's what I want. Yeah, okay, here we go. Okay, so, NNN is, um... NNN is a pineapple. Really fun to say, NNNNNNN, it's kinda like a banana, na 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 na, but it's a pineapple. Uh... Un camion, un camion. I guess this is a truck, this is a truck. C'est un truck, c'est un truck? Should say "c'est", right? This is... C'est un truck, c'est un truck. Okay. Uh, and yogurt... Nah, that's not how you say that, it's like yoart. You, yo- We're gonna have to come back to that guy, how to pronounce it, pronunciate it. Oh gosh, can't even speak English. Une cerise. It's a mouse, little mousy mouse. Du papier, uh, du papier toilette, toilette. Du papier toilette? Okay, toilet paper. Une carotte. Uh, this is a carrot. Une carotte. Okay. Une balance. This is a scale, c'est une scale. Un sac. Okay, and, I guess this is a bag, bag of fruit here. And un boutier, boutier. Boutiel, boutiel. Okay, cool. Um, so this is fun, so let me just jump over to which, so that's... What I'm doing here is looking at the pictures, 'cause I can remember them. Kind of like put that in, in, uh, my brain. And then what we're gonna do is, um, I'm gonna jump over to Hotkey 2. And you see, I've got all of the, the words, the 300 moes. Look, 300 of those moes in my flashcards. Um, so we're gonna get to a place where we're repeating them. Um, we've done this on the show a couple times, it takes up basically the whole session. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna study these on my own. Uh, and then maybe come back tomorrow when we feel, uh, feel a little bit better and, uh, can move a little bit faster through them. Um, but that's the plan. Okay, you guys cool with that? Let's see what's going on over here. Uh, da-da. Kelsey says LOL-ing. I hope it's LOL-ing and not like loing. You're trying to tell me how to pronounce or pronunciate, announce, enunciate. Loing. Uh, salut, Sam Kraft! Uh, Liz! We're gonna learn how to speak French one day. Okay, I, I'm glad there's so much support out there, you guys, I appreciate it. Um, so I had a curious question, how do you learn or deal with colloquialisms? Like trying to say an English one in French, or worse, hearing one in French and not, and being 100% confused? You know, it's a great question, um, for somebody who knows what they're doing! Um, I think we just, uh, try to be as curious as possible. Keep an open mind and be like, whoa, that's a weird one. Uh, I love colloquialisms, they're, they're the best. Um, that makes, makes language fun. Language is stupid anyway, it's just like we make everything up all the time. Um, like, you could just make up, like this, this guy, this is, this is now a floing. I'm gonna call this a fl- no, a flon, I'm gonna call it a flon. Yeah, it's a flon. Why? 'Cause I said so, that's language, boom. Okay, um, hey Liz. Alright, this is dumb, I'm, I'm, you guys are distracting me. Let's do some Babbel, this is gonna be terrifying. We did it last time, I'm kind of committed to making a fool of myself, so, um, let's do it. Uh, da-da-da-da, this is lesson 8. Let's see, make sure you're on the screen, you can see me, lesson 8, okay. Uh, lesson 8 of the course, Newcomer, Newcomer Course 2. There's 10 of 13. I logged in yesterday and I had done a lot of these a long time ago, so I don't even remember what we're doing here. So this is gonna be bad. Um, Sam, I'll hit you up on my flon later. Uh, okay. Vos, uh, vos rouges et quatre ruies, quatre cruises? Whatever that is. Here you'll learn numbers, one, uh, 9 to 11, 9 to 12, why can't you? 9 to 12, vocabulary for things you find in a bar, ooh, cool, fun, and plural activities. Let's start. On y va. C'est parti. Um, let's do it. Should we do? Uh... I guess we can do it this way? Yeah, let's continue. Allow, yes, let's do it. Yes, everything can happen, microphone enabled, continue. Obviously, I've never done this before. Hey! Yes. You can, hey, hey, okay.
Une bière.
Une bière. Did I do it? Woo boy! Here we go, feeling good already.
Un vin rouge.
Un vin rouge. Okay. Okay.
Des cacahuètes.
Des cacahuètes! Oh, I didn't like that. Des cacahuètes. Des cacahuètes. Yeah, okay. It's not gonna let me talk in the middle of these.
Des olives.
Des olives. Des olives. Des olives. Well, this is frustrating. Des olives. I just got it wrong!
Des olives.
You guys are seeing this, right? Okay, um, choose the correct translation. Olives. Des olives.
Une bière.
Une bière.
Des cacahuètes.
Des cacahuètes.
Un vin rouge.
Un vin rouge, okay, cool. Write it, oh crap, I wasn't paying attention to spelling. Uh... Bière, bière.
Une bière.
I missed an accent. Uh, uh... Un vent rouge.
Un vin rouge.
Continue. Des cacahuètes? I'm just kick, I'm continuing.
Des cacahuètes.
Alright, for next time. Kak- kaka? Kaka, 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 okay. Kaka and then huette, huette. Uh, say, c'est à, c'est à, c'est à. Huie, uh, huh, wait, how do you say H? Ha- hach, ash, ash, sorry, ash. Ah, okay. C'est à, c'est à, ash. Oh, uuuu. I need to do my alphabet again. E, t, e, s. Okay. Kaka, chretz. Des olives, I think it's just, I think you just say English, des olives.
Des olives.
Des olives, des olives. Ash, ash is for H, ash. I'm gonna go back to my, uh...
Je prends un café et une petite bouteille d'eau, et toi?
Oh, what is happening? Wait, what just happened? Okay, moi, je prends une... Oh, it's, it's supposed to do a beer. Je prends une bière, bière, bière. Ou un pastries?
Moi, je prends une bière ou un pastis?
Pastis.
Tu prends déjà l'apéritif?
Bah bien sûr!
Uh, d'accord, je prends une, red wine? Je prends un vent, wait, vent... Vent rouge? Is that what we said? Don't, not...
D'accord, je prends un vin rouge alors.
I think you can click them, I, maybe that's faster, I don't know, I was trying to like... Brandon's asking if you can click these letters, I think you can. Uh, on demande des bla bla bla, wait, on demande, should, oh god, come on, be a good student here. On demande des blank et des blank. Should we ask for some peanuts and some olives? So, on demande, should we ask, or we ask? Um, for some kakah, ash? U? Uh... Ah, I was so close. Nope, 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 it was i, e, t, s. T, e, s. Oh, hey look, it's got the things right here, if you, so you can spell it out. Oh, I see, I'm dumb.
On demande des cacahuètes et des olives?
Kelsey s-
Bien sûr!
Kelsey says this kakahouet en espagnol, espagnola aussi. Um, très intéressante, Kelsey? Merci pour ton conseil. Thanks for the tip.
Neuf.
Ooh, okay, here we go. Uh, oh wait, I'm supposed to be speaking. Neuf. Bam! Continue, let's do it.
Dix.
Dix. Get outta here.
Onze.
Onze. Like the six-foot, fifth grader playing basketball, just dunking over here. Douze. Douze. Uh, match the item. Euh...
Dix.
Dix, neuf.
Neuf.
Douze.
Douze.
Onze.
Onze.
Okay, let's, let's go, come on, let's go. Neuf.
Neuf.
Dix, man.
Dix.
Zero, uh, oh, onze, zero. Onze.
Onze.
Is this fun? Do you guys like this? Douze. If you tell me no, it's cool, 'cause I'm looking for excuses to not do this. The definite article in the plural is always les. So, here we go. Où sont les chips?
Où sont les chips?
Les chips. Vous prenez les olives, des olives. What? Are you, oh... Wait, some olives, right? What are they wanting me to do? Vous prenez les, oh, I'm supposed to read. While there is no indefinite plural article in English, in French, the article des, des, des is always used. My bad. Instead of du, it's des. Uh, vous prenez des, des olives, des olives.
Vous prenez des olives?
Des olives, des olives. Vous prenez des olives? Okay. Um, da-da-da-da. Sam says I no-scoped them numbers. Damn right. Uh... Choose, les ordres. Okay, je paye, uh, for the beer and the olives. Je paye, uh... Uh, des? No, damn! No!
Je paye les bières et les olives.
I have no clue! Choose, les ordres. Limon, lemonade co- co- neuf euros. Lemonades cost nine euros. Les... Lemonade, the lemonade. A lemonade, the lemonade, so, wait. I'm gonna say les.
Les limonades coûtent neuf euros.
Les, les limonades. Tu prends, euh, des, some, right? Not, not du, but some, yeah, for plural, okay. Tu prends des cacahuètes?
Tu prends des cacahuètes à l'apéritif?
À l'apéritif? With the aperitif? With the aperitif? Avec, uh, okay, keep going. Je prends toujours les olives? Nope.
Je prends toujours des olives à l'apéritif.
Dang it, dang it, dang it, dang it, dang it. Get outta here, Kelsey, I'm getting to the flashcards, gonna do it, jeez! Kelsey's mad at me 'cause I'm not doing recalling of the French, of the flashcards, I've just been doing, seeing the French word and then doing the, the English equivalent. I'm getting to it, there was just a lot to do today, where are we in this lesson? Okay, I'm supposed to be done with this by now. Le cout, ah, what is happening here? Time for a recap. Le blank, the red wine, oh. Le blank coûtait trois eur, trois euros. Okay, le, le vent rouge... Okay.
Le vin rouge coûte trois euros.
Are you having a beer? Tu prends une bière? Uh, bi, let's see, we'll do it this way, just to see. Nope, 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 doesn't want me to do it. Oh, I think you gotta type it that way, so, e slash, that's weird. Bière. Enter. Enter, okay.
Tu prends une bière?
Uh... Uh, on prend... Des cac- cac... It's... Ouh, there's an accent in there somewhere, I missed it, but... Um... Enter. Des cacahuètes ou des olives?
On prend des cacahuètes ou des olives?
Okay, and le, uh, les cafés, les cafés coûtent onze euros.
Les cafés coûtent onze euros.
Coût, 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 not courant, what are you doing dude? Coût, cost, coût. Are we done? Okay, thank goodness, that was terrifying. Awful. Um, okay, cool, you all wanna jump over to the French experiment? French experum, Fran- Not, uh, here we are. Sam says des olives, more like des soleils. Olives are terrible. Olives are délicieux, dude. Get with the program. Okay, so yesterday, here's where we're gonna finish today. Um, I had this other thing that I wanted to do too, uh, there's... Maybe I'll just keep this stream going after this. There's this other, there's this guy that I've been watching recently. Um, you should check it out and see if you like him, his name's, I don't know, his channel name is Français Authentic. Authentic, um, and he does like, uh, it's like self-help type things, which is fun to listen to, but he's doing it purposely a little bit slower. Maybe just like a simplified vocabulary, you know, and not like super fast and, uh, like some expert or high-thinking or anything. It's, it's obviously made for people who are trying to learn French. Um, maybe check this one out. Um, huit adverbes, à connaître absolument. Um, and I'm, I haven't watched it yet, I watched like a little bit here, just to see what this was like. I was gonna kinda watch a little bit of it, oh yeah, and he's got these cute kits that he uses. So, um, I wanna continue on the story and we'll see if we can get to that. Maybe I'll just keep this thing going, y'all let me know. Okay. Yesterday, we met, um, we met the bird and the, the whale, and they love each other. And they loved lots about each other, and they love eating fish together. So today, we're gonna continue. Uh... On va continuer avec la leçon.
L'oiseau rire de la baleine. Ils aimait tous deux manger beaucoup de petits poissons.
Okay, picking up right here?
Durant l'été, l'oiseau et la baleine se retrouvait dans la baie. Ils parlaient beaucoup. Ils parlaient de la lune et des marées et des bateaux sur l'océan. L'oiseau racontait des blagues et faisait rire la baleine. La baleine chantait de belles chansons qui faisaient pleurer l'oiseau. Un jour, tu pourras rencontrer ma-
Is there, is there an echo like we did last time, or did I fix that? Let me just make sure. If there was an echo that whole time, I'm gonna be so mad. Uh, it looks like there probably was. So dumb. Okay, let's try this again.
La baleine chantait de belles chansons qui faisaient pleurer l'oiseau. Un jour, tu pourras rencontrer ma famille dans l'océan, dit la baleine. Et tu pourras rencontrer mes amis sur terre, dit l'oiseau.
Okay, well, 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 lost.
La baleine chantait de belles chansons qui faisaient pleurer l'oiseau. Et des bateaux sur l'océan. L'oiseau racontait des blagues et faisait rire la baleine. La baleine chantait de belles chansons qui faisaient pleurer l'oiseau.
Oh, no, no, don't translate.
Un jour, tu pour-
Um, okay, so, l'oiseau raconte des bal- ba- blagues et faisait rire la baleine, baleine. Well, what does this mean? The whale, no, the bird, oiseau, l'oiseau. Raconte, raconte des ba- blagues. I don't know what that means. Remembers the blags? The... And has dreams? Faisait rêver de baleine. And dreams of the whale? Okay. And then, the whale chante, chantait, chante de belles chansons. Sings the best songs, is that right? Qui, and, um, which makes the bird happy, plu. How close did I get? Okay, the bird told jokes? Ah! And made the whale laugh, way off, way, 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 way off. Okay. L'oiseau raconte, uh... Raconte. Um, we're gonna add this to our list of, I needed like a storage place for these words. I gotta look this one up. Um, des blagues. I guess that's jokes, so, told stories, or bad, or jokes. And made the whale laugh. Faisait ri- uh, rire la baleine. And then the, the whale sang beautiful songs that made the bird cry, plu. Man, I was way off on this one, way off.
L'oiseau racontait des blagues et faisait rire la baleine. La baleine chantait de belles chansons qui faisaient pleurer l'oiseau.
Man, I don't know about you, but this dude who's, uh, reading it just makes me, it's just like the best love story ever. La baleine, uh, chantait de belles song, uh, chansons. It's so nice and pretty. What just happened on the stream? Something happened. Um, somebody did something. Uh, I didn't hear an echo, great. L'audio est clair comme l'eau de roche. Uh, is clear as water in a river, or de roche, whatever a roche, roche is. Alright, we're just gonna keep this thing going, guys. I know I'm out of time, but I wanna get through this story. Um, okay, let's keep going.
Un jour, tu pourras rencontrer ma famille dans l'océan.
Un jour, tu pourrais raconter ma famille dans l'océan, dit la baleine.
Dit la baleine.
Dit la baleine, de baleine, baleine.
Et tu pourras rencontrer mes amis sur-
Uh, et tu pourrais raconter mes amis sur terre.
Terre, dit l'oiseau.
Dit l'oiseau.
Tout était parfait.
Tout était par- parfait. Okay, this is where the twist is about to come in, but, one day, um... They pourraient. Uh, want to tell, one day they want to tell their family, or they want to meet their family in the ocean? Says th- the whale? And, et tu pourrais raconter mes amis on the land, so, and I, and you, oh, one day you can meet my family in the ocean? Cool, eh, right. Un jour, tu pourrais, saying, you, you can. Uh, and then he says, or she says, I forget which one, which one is the, I don't know, maybe they're, whatever their genders are, who knows? Et tu pourrais raconter mes amis sur terre, on land, you can meet my friends on land. Uh, dit, uh, oiseau. Um, tout était parfait. Everything was perfect, that's the, you get ready for some shit to go down, let's see what it says. Uh, one day, you can meet my family in the ocean, so, said the whale, and you can meet my friends on land, said the bird, everything was perfect. Okay, let's listen one more time.
Un jour, tu pourras rencontrer ma famille-
Un jour, tu pourras racon- It's a, like a future conditional, something like that, but yeah, pourra, saying, in the future, something, I'm, okay, one day.
La baleine chantait de belles chansons qui faisait pleurer l'oiseau. Un jour, tu pourras rencontrer ma famille dans l'océan, dit la baleine. Et tu pourras rencontrer mes amis sur terre, dit l'oiseau. Tout était parfait.
Tout était parfait. Okay. Um, ah, did we, did we leave it there? No. I wanna know more, let's do this hard one right here and then we'll go.
Mais le monde ne s'arrête pas de tourner simplement parce qu'un oiseau et une baleine tombent amoureux. L'été fit place à l'automne et l'automne fit place à l'hiver. L'océan devint froid et toutes les baleines partirent vers des eaux plus chaudes.
Okay, uh, mais le monde ne s'arrête pas de tourner sim- simplement parce qu'un oiseau et une balein- baleine tombent d'amour. Okay, but the world did not stop turning, simply because, simply because bird and whale fell in love. Était fit place, était fit place à l'automne? I guess the summer, like, fell into autumn? Something like that, um, became, whatever, uh, and l'automne fit place à l'hiver. Uh, some, fit place, figure out what that means, but, and then autumn becomes winter, um. Di l'océan divint froid et tous les baleins. Okay, the ocean becomes, became, divin, I don't know what this word is. Froid, cold, et tous les baleins, and all of the whales, partent vers uh, des eaux plus chaudes. Uh, to water that was warm. And all the bi- all the whales had to go where the water was warm, let's see what it says. But the world does not stop turning simply because a bird, uh, and a whale fall in love. Summer gave way to autumn, okay? L'été fit place à l'automne et l'automne fit place à l'hiver, okay? The ocean became cold. L'océan divint froid, divint froid. Becomes cold, and all the whales left for warmer waters. Uh, tada. Et tous les baleins par- what is this, partir, pa- oh, pa- parti, got it. Uh, vers des eaux plus chaudes. Okay, let's listen to this last one.
L'été fit place à l'automne, tout était parfait. Mais le monde ne s'arrête pas de tourner simplement parce qu'un oiseau et une baleine tombent amoureux. L'été fit place à l'automne et l'automne fit place à l'hiver. L'océan devint froid et toutes les baleines partirent vers des eaux plus chaudes.
Cool, that was fun. Okay, cool. Well, this was fun for the day, it's about to get really bad, cuz they're, this bird and this whale are gonna like, they're gonna Titanic themselves in the ocean. And they're gonna Jack and Rose. Um, alright, so I wanted to get to the other thing, let's see what people are saying here, uh, hey Skylar, this is Squire. Hello, sir. Uh, hello Skylar, I offer you this little challenge, pronounce one, pronounce, oh my god. Pronounce one of the most complicated sentences to say in French. He's, okay, then he lay, he lays it out there and says, not even Sam can pronounce it. Is this a joke? Is this like one of those things, is like, if I say it, I'm gonna say something dirty, you know? You know what I'm talking about? Okay. Les chaussettes de l'archi d'achis sont elles c'est chez, archi c'est chez, c'est chez. Well, it's probably a bad idea to get me to do it, cuz I don't know what I'm doing. Um, okay, well, this has been fun. I enjoy this story, I don't know about you guys, I enjoy these little kids', uh, kid's stories. Brandon Kirk! Hey buddy, maintain focus, don't get too, too loose, too loose, little, uh. That's a, it's a New Orleans street pun. Or a town, uh, in France. Um, okay. Why don't we listen to this video that I wanted to get into? So basically what you're doing, you're just seeing a little bit of me bouncing around in these things, so, um, and, yeah. Tell me what you like, cuz we're still trying to figure out what works online and what doesn't. So, I don't know, uh, da da, okay, here we go, this is, um, this is huit adverbes à connaître absolument.
Tu utilises au quotidien par les francophones.
Little out.
Salut chers amis, merci de me rejoindre pour cette-
Okay, that's how I'm gonna start the new, every episode of this now. Salut chers amis, salut chers amis, sal- salut chers amis. Chers amis, chers amis, not chaise amis, chers amis. What's up with that? What is, how, why? Merci de m'en rejoindre pour cette nouvelle vidéo. Um, okay, I'm gonna do that next time. Merci de m'en rejoindre.
Cette nouvelle vidéo, aujourd'hui, on va voir quelque chose de très, très important puisque souvent, connaître quelques mots de vocabulaire supplémentaire, ça te permet de gagner en fluidité à l'oral.
Okay, that's fun. I don't think we're gonna get into what the actual tips are, cuz I gotta back it all up. Aujourd'hui, on va voir, uh, we're going to look, on va voir, à quelque chose de très, uh, très, oh, de très, très importante, pris- puisque, I don't know, puisque, souv- souhait connaître. Okay, so he says, we're going to look, see, look into something very, very important. Puisque, souhait connaître, to know. Um, souvent, souvent, what is souvent? That looks familiar.
Souvent connaître quelques mots de voc-
Quelques mots de vocabularies supplémentaires, ça te permet de gagner en fluide. Fluid à l'oral. Okay, so, to work, something very important to, um, I forgot what he said already, something with words and vocabulary, supplements, so, which permits you, ça te, it, you, permits, uh, to winning galley, uh, the fluidi- fluidity, uh, oral fluidity. We're all looking for a little oral fluidity.
vocabulaire supplémentaire, ça te permet de gagner en fluidité à l'oral. D'accord, c'est vraiment euh, la concentration sur quelques mots qui peut t'aider à débloquer certaines situations à l'oral. Et aujourd'hui, ce que j'ai décidé de faire, c'est de partager avec toi huit adverbes qui sont utilisés à l'oral par les francophones et que tu pourras toi-même utiliser, et à mon sens, ce sont des adverbes, des mots qu'il faut connaître absolument pour bien s'exprimer en français. Si tu ne sais pas ce qu'est un adverbe-
Okay, uh, so that was all the setup, okay. Si, si tu ne sais pas, if you don't know. Uh, c'est, qu'est-ce qu'un adverbe? Uh, what an adverb is? Tu peux aller jeter un petit coup d'oeil?
Tu peux aller, euh, jeter un petit coup d'œil à la vidéo que j'ai faite?
Lier une vidéo que je fais sur le sujet, uh, sujet. Okay, so what he's saying is, if you don't know what an adverb is, stop watching this. Uh, maybe I should stop watching this.
Sur le sujet, tu la retrouves dans le i là-bas comme info.
Qu'est-ce qu'un adverb?
Il s'agit d'une vidéo dans laquelle j'explique rapidement, simplement et de façon authentique ce qu'est un adverbe et à quoi ça sert. Donc, tu peux déjà peut-être charger cette vidéo dans une nouvelle fenêtre et découvrir cette partie théorique. On va d'abord maintenant voir à, au sens de huit adverbes français incontournables. Pour certains d'entre eux, il y a plusieurs sens, ce sont des adverbes, des mots qui ont plusieurs sens, mais je me focaliserai à chaque fois sur le sens le plus utilisé. C'est parti pour huit adverbes en français à connaître absolument. Et le premier d'entre eux justement, ça va être absolument. Le mot absolument, l'adverbe absolument que tu retrouves dans le titre de cette vidéo. Absolument, ça veut dire que c'est quelque chose qui est indispensable, d'accord, qu'il faut vraiment faire, à tout prix.
À tout prix, what's à tout prix mean? That's weird.
On en a vraiment besoin.
On a vraiment besoin. One, what does that mean? Really, we really need it.
On ne peut pas s'en passer. Donc, si je dis que nous allons parler de huit adverbes à connaître absolument, si je te dis il faut absolument connaître ces mots, ça veut dire, tu dois les connaître, d'accord, c'est indispensable, c'est très, très important, tu ne peux pas t'en passer. C'est le sens ici de l'adverbe absolument. L'adverbe inconsciemment est un adverbe que tu peux également entendre, euh, de temps en temps à l'oral. Ça veut dire d'une manière inconsciente, une manière inconsciente, c'est-à-dire sans s'en rendre compte, sans s'en rendre compte, sans y penser, sans que ce soit volontaire, d'accord, il se passe quelque chose, mais on ne le veut pas vraiment, on n'y pense pas vraiment, c'est quelque chose d'inconscient, c'est quelque chose qui arrive d'une manière non réfléchie. Tu peux par exemple entendre, il a eu une discussion avec son ami et il l'a blessé inconsciemment. S'il l'a blessé inconsciemment, il lui a dit des choses négatives, des choses méchantes, des choses qui ont blessé cette personne, mais il l'a fait sans s'en rendre compte, il n'a pas fait exprès de blesser cette personne, il ne s'en est même pas rendu compte, il y a même pas pensé. C'est quelque chose qu'il a fait inconsciemment, sans s'en rendre compte, sans y penser.
I'm just gonna go ahead and say it, this, this is like above where I'm at. But we're three minutes in, um, and yeah, I think it's helping.
L'adverbe effectivement est très utilisé et il a plusieurs sens.
Effectivement, I know this one.
Utiliser le sens le plus courant qui est de confirmer quelque chose, d'accord? On utilise effectivement très souvent pour confirmer quelque chose, pour montrer que c'est vrai. Par exemple, tu, si tu as une discussion avec quelqu'un, tu peux lui dire, il me semble que tu as déjà rencontré mon frère. Et la personne peut te dire, effectivement, nous nous sommes vus l'année dernière. Donc, tu vois le effectivement ici, il sert à confirmer ce que la personne vient de nous dire. On confirme, on montre que ce qu'a dit la personne juste avant est vrai, effectivement.
Effectivement, so, so, yeah, he's saying it's like, exactly, or like, yeah, pretty much. That's kinda like the best way to use this.
Effectivement. L'adverbe exactement très utilisé également, il peut avoir un sens un peu proche d'effectivement. Euh, il signifie, c'est exact, c'est exactement ça, d'accord? C'est vraiment d'une manière exacte, c'est précisément ça. Donc, si on reprend l'exemple précédent, je dis, oh, tu as déjà rencontré mon frère? Et là, au lieu de dire effectivement, tu dis exactement, nous nous sommes vus l'année dernière. Le, le mot ou l'adverbe exactement, il a une idée supplémentaire par rapport à effectivement. C'est que non seulement on confirme que quelque chose est vrai, mais on confirme que c'est exactement ça, d'accord? On confirme, c'est un peu plus fort, on confirme plus qu'avec le mot effectivement. Mais c'est à ça sert exactement pour confirmer quelque chose, montrer que c'est vrai, que c'est ça, et que ce n'est pas autre chose, exactement. L'adverbe carrément, il signifie vraiment, complètement. Par exemple, et j'espère que tu ne diras pas ça, j'espère vraiment, mais qui sait, ça peut être une chose qui passe dans ta tête. Tu peux être en train de te dire, elle est carrément nulle la vidéo de Johan. Donc, si tu dis, elle est carrément nulle la vidéo de Johan, ça veut dire, la vidéo de Johan, elle est vraiment nulle, elle est complètement nulle. Pas qu'un peu nulle, complètement nulle, vraiment nulle, elle est carrément nulle. Manifestement, c'est très utilisé aussi, et c'est du langage quand même qui est un peu plus soutenu. Ça veut dire d'une manière évidente, on le voit, c'est clair, d'accord? Le fait de regarder la situation nous montre que c'est clair, que c'est évident. Par exemple, imagine, il est très tard, il est deux heures du matin, et une personne qui était chez toi va monter dans sa voiture pour rentrer chez elle. Tu peux lui dire, hmm, tu es manifestement trop fatigué pour conduire. Donc, quand on dit, tu es manifestement trop fatigué pour conduire, on dit, ça se voit, je n'ai pas besoin que tu me dises, je suis fatigué. Te regarder me suffit, d'accord? C'est quelque chose que je vois manifestement, je le vois, c'est évident, ça saute aux yeux. On peut dire également, manifestement. Un adverbe que tu as déjà forcément entendu, c'est l'adverbe forcément.
Forcément.
Forcément, ça veut dire, c'est obligatoire, c'est sûr, c'est inévitable, d'accord? Tu peux entendre par exemple, pour travailler en France, il faut forcément parler français. Ça veut dire, c'est obligé, tu ne peux pas ne pas parler français, si tu veux travailler en France, il faut forcément parler français, c'est obligatoire. C'est inévitable. Et si je dis, tu as forcément entendu ce mot, ça veut dire, c'est obligatoire, c'est sûr que si tu étudies le français, tu as déjà entendu cet adverbe, forcément, qui veut dire, c'est obligatoire, c'est obligé, c'est sûr que ça s'est passé. Et le dernier, le dernier adverbe que nous allons voir aujourd'hui, c'est l'adverbe éventuellement.
I just realized I'm playing like this dude's whole video, this probably is gonna get flagged, taken down, um. Okay, so we made it through like six of these, I was having a hard time keeping up, but you know, I like the presentation, cuz he's giving lots of synonyms, he's, uh, he's repeating the key adverb over and over, so even if I'm not like quite catching the context, you're getting that word, yeah, it's pretty cool. I don't know, what'd you think? Do more of this, do more of the story, do more flashcards, do more babble. What do you guys wanna hear? Let me know, um, because, uh, I gotta make my lesson plan for tomorrow. Starting some French lessons this week, I hope you guys are excited, we'll probably start a, wait, that's not what I wanna show you, what's going on over here? This is not, here we go. Um, yeah, that was fun. Uh, at least you know I am doing the work, right? Like, you see me doing it. Oh, I'm getting a phone call, I should probably go. Um, cool, so, tomorrow, I'll see all of you back in class. And, uh, yeah, we'll learn some French together, let me, seriously, let me know what you like, cuz, um, or what's helpful. I'm very curious. Okay, here's how we're gonna end it. Uh, boop. Bye! Oh wait, we should have this. Oh wait, we should have this. Oh, I should have a- Oh wait, this is, this is how we should end it. Un saucy, hmm, pichard, hmm. Un bâche. Boîte de sialia. Un anem. Un camion. Une yogath. Hmm, saut. Des tabliers, des toiles, toilettes. Une carrettes. Une balance. Au revoir!